But she looked back at others and said, now that she's all here.
Are we gonna go ahead?
Yeah, we'll go ahead and do what we're doing, but we'll redo that.
We fixed it ourselves.
Ah, I was cleaning all my garage. Okay.
That's hard to find.
Yeah, those cat doors are just...
When you said I was out low, I was there. Uh-huh, but I would... You're not hurting Jimmy. Okay, that's what I wanted you to do, shut down spending.
I just spent all I could this morning. Uh, they got three shipments in this last week. Uh, they had some eighteen-inch ovals, which they didn't have like a flat log, but when I got them, he's got a seventy-two-foot driveway there, we're cutting it down to sixty-foot.
Cheryl.
Hers was in there, and it was down again this much.
No, no, bigger than that.
But if it was fine, it was good.
And so, I'm gonna put ten foot, take five off inside.
Well, I overran it.
Watch out for Charles this morning. I want to get that done before it started, right? Because it comes foggy, we wouldn't have to redo everything we've done.
You know what I think this week, yeah, I cleaned my house from top to bottom, moved out first, and then my house, something I lost, my one, and I didn't tell.
What'd he say? And he didn't, didn't win it.
Then she went there to the icebox.
I did all of it.
I come back, and I was cleaning the icebox, I mean, a month ago, though, everybody was old. Fraser and everything. I said, no more. I said, maybe we can always cut that way every year. I said, you go, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, that was why I'm right there. We took a load back in the early morning, too. By the mission, we wish to, we should stop that.
Morning, guys.
Morning.
Good. Morning.
Morning.
The summer means.
Put down the bill, it's done, sir.
Young County Court, uh, Commissioners' Court will now be in session, sitting in a regular meeting. This is Monday, October twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one. As you might note, that meeting was postponed in the matter of course, time required, that all members of the court are here. And if it's convenient, please, please, Mr. Rogers, please, please send our application.
Bless you, pray. And Father, we just thank you for that beautiful day in Young County, Texas. Father, we just ask you to bless all those that are present today. God direct us as we place these issues the better I can. Father, we just ask you to, uh, comfort those that lost loved ones last few weeks, and for those that are ill and ailing, just, uh, take your healing hand and, and heal those. Father, we just ask you again to be with us, and, uh, forgive us for what we've done, for what we've done in our lives.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas on its day under God, one indivisible.
I don't know, well, let me make this comment, we are, uh, being live to YouTube. Uh, if anyone may wish to, uh, observe that meeting virtually, and make any comments on any items that we may have on the agenda today, our call-in number is nine four zero two two one two one oh seven. Item number three, COVID- nineteen update, um, according to our media survey, I think, on the, our nails back, there were eighteen thousand and ninety-eight testing individuals through our system here in Young County, our medical, uh, facilities. There was fourteen thousand two hundred and forty-one negative tests, three thousand eight hundred and forty-eight positive, or non-ending. Total active count stands at seventy-nine, and I think this was just ended Friday. This report, and those, uh, Young County residents stood at sixty-one. They were all being cared for by our facilities here in Young County. Sixty-nine people were, uh, at home recovering. There were ten hospitalized. There had been three thousand seven hundred and five that hadn't recovered. And our net count stood, stood at sixty-four at that time. That's my COVID report. You'll also find in your package, uh, a report of Young County taxes, such as, like, September activity report, compared year-to-year, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one. I thought that I have listed on there, if there are any things, uh, any questions, anything for, uh, the attention of the court, or any, uh, down here in public. If not, we'll move on to item number four. Consider county clerk finished previous meeting on October twelve, two thousand twenty-one. Are there any, um, additions, deletions, or corrections need to be made?
There was one change about a year ago, you all know. There was one change that had to be made. And he's already got one, and she's done it, so.
Changes are good, man.
Changes are good.
Changes are good.
Yes. My motion is accepted, whether or not I put the change, change on that one, say.
Same.
What I did, Brett, uh...
Six.
Six. We're looking at President Rogers.
This is year twenty twenty-one, and this is year twenty twenty-two.
Mr. President on the motion, Rogers on the second, and, uh, with correction, allow number nine, on the favor. I just consider financial report, like, please.
I may have big some securities, but, uh, September is all balance, we're still doing some receivables and payables into the twenty-one, but they show up as that. And, um, general fund has two million six hundred and fifty-nine thousand and some change over there. So, I don't know why we got so much money this year.
Motion by Mr. Piling, and second by Mr. Rogers, to approve the Treasury Financial Report as presented, on the favor. Item number six, consider Rogers' pledge of amendment, say, vouchers payable.
I have that. And we're still paying some out of the twenty-one year, if they're dated, um, September or earlier. But, and I'm disgusted, I think, we have one more run with the twenty-one, and then it just closes out, be done with it. On this run for FY twenty-one, the total is forty thousand one fifty-one eighty-one. And out of the general is nine thousand six oh eight ninety-nine. That's for FY twenty-one.
Just motion, give the... Say. To approve, uh, to approve vouchers payable for end of year, two thousand twenty-one. On the favor.
On FY twenty-two vouchers, total is sixty-nine thousand eight ninety-nine, ninety-nine. That was almost sixty-nine hundred and ninety-one. Uh, out of the general is forty-two thousand, forty-five dollars and thirty-two cents.
Say. Vouchers payable for this year, twenty-six, reported, on Cheryl Roberts, on the favor. Go on, we're pointing down under here, there's a discussion, considering service agreement, holding guard the security, for panic, for panic system, twenty-eight hundred and forty-four dollars, forty-two cents.
So, uh, y'all asked me to, to call and see if I could find out the advantage. The only advantage is it's just a little bit cheaper on your service calls, like it says on this one sheet. Um, your labor's cheaper, your travel per hour is cheaper, so ninety-five dollars, it's eighty dollars. And then it's sixty-five cents per mile also. And I don't know what it is, if you doesn't have it on there, if you don't have it, so. Um, you know, it just, but I think I only remember one time, maybe that we had...
I'm, I'm gonna say that we just don't do that, we take that little thing, we have to have it.
It's gone up, um, it go a hundred...
Hundred dollars.
What they've done, don't, uh... I was, I'm just, like, if you know, if you put, say, a bunch of code.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It doesn't cover.
A lot of the more money you don't cover, it does.
You know, it's, the silver says it also covers that extended warranty. She didn't even tell me what that included. Uh, well, down at the bottom, warranties, equipment, failure of equipment, files due to use or age, it'll repair, replace what's left of the equipment, on their judgment.
On their judgment.
That's a small thing.
It gets small, man.
Right. Well, I mean, I don't know, I'm, it's just a, it's an insurance policy on the system, so.
Sure enough, we don't do it.
Well, we bought it in twenty, in twenty eighteen, we, uh, the new system. We bought it in, uh, November of twenty eighteen. The panic system itself was eleven thousand five hundred. And of course, you got the, the cat off the panty buttons, forty-eight panty buttons at a hundred and thirty-five each. Um, the whole total on that deal was twenty-one thousand. So, it's a three...
Three weeks, that's three.
Three and a half years, right there.
When we accidentally... And that does happen quite often, it comes up with the scanner.
Three and a half years, and then we replaced a little deal.
I, I want to do this, this, but...
Yeah, we usually...
You can get tasted by someone who needs a little water.
Knee or break head or something, had that happen? Well, let's see, we purchased five more, no, we've got about fifty-three buttons. But, um, and then there's a repeater in the basement, second floor, two of those. Like I said, hopefully it was twenty-one thousand, then we purchased some, uh, extra buttons. So, and you know, they, I guess we must not have had the contract at that time because professional services, they charged us a hundred and five dollars.
They don't cover the buttons? You don't think they cover the buttons?
Yeah, but they talked to me through about three times on the funding on charges, so.
All right.
Yes, yes. On the bottom, sure.
About four times, you buy them, you say? I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say we don't think it's sale. I put that, you need a motion, I'm gonna put it, I'm gonna need a motion.
I don't, I don't like, I don't have insurance policy on it.
You know, it's...
It's something, it, it, you know...
It's not, I mean, they got a spittle with COVID stuff. I guess what I'm saying, Matt, is for three years, not paying that, you buy a whole new system. They're old.
What happens in like, three months? I guess we just do it then, probably four of them, that's forty-eight hundred dollars.
Some, of course, pieces, what they cost, then just something, it doesn't say, yeah, a hundred and thirty-five dollars. It doesn't cover the buttons, anything.
They cost that much, I mean, this. They just have that part of the motion.
I just need...
I say, that, Rogers, discontinued. Plan the, uh, annual service agreement, a motion, as the law of guardians, any solutions, LLC, for the system, twenty-eight hundred and forty-four. And that's what we're going to discuss, consider carrier, carrier commercial service, HVAC, maintenance plan, last annual payment amount, I don't know, a little bit, they split the pool.
Yes, we pay in the quarter, in the unit.
Total is thirty-three hundred and twenty dollars, our new price is, or seven hundred and ninety-six dollars.
So, um...
It's what I, every year, I think.
It has, yeah. The, um, gentleman with Carrier emailed me and asked me, you know, because I told him it's gonna be on the agenda, asked me which I decided, and I said, you're still contemplating, can you tell me some of the advantages? So he said, here are a few bullet points you can pass along. The age of the machine, he said, regular service agreement by Carrier, uh, train tech is highly recommended. Uh, he said, regular operational visits and a annual cleaning allows us to put our eyes and hands on the machine to help diagnose any possible future issues. He said it helps you, the overall running of the chiller, uh, preferred scheduling, should any other issues or concerns arise, maybe they put us a little higher, kind of, this contract rate, if any repairs are needed. So I guess they do reduce the rate, and I know those rates aren't pretty expensive for...
Or if there are any warranty that they need.
I think it's old.
Well, it's not as old as that chiller was.
Pretty, pretty old, I don't think so, but I'm happy to have it since.
Did you hear anybody else?
Well, John Lane asked me about them and the board, and, uh, back when we were still on contract with this company. I notified him, and, uh, he made, he made, he made a report Friday, and he said he'd work for some price. Uh, I had heard back from his morning, because of course, I was kind of near that, because I was on Friday, whatever.
I talked to a local fellow here in town that used to work on these commercial deals all the time. He said that he will have a problem doing the same thing, very good one, you know, just come out here and do it, asking and all that stuff.
Maybe when you have parts or something, you want, and you come and fix it?
Yep. Lot quicker once in a while.
There happens, happens now, he knows everything that they do, it's local.
You know, it's such a big unit, it's.
How big the light is still.
Okay.
Probably by surprise.
Okay. Anything else you want me to ask Carrier about it?
Just look into the fields, I'll, I'll look into their debt.
Okay.
The children gets.
Okay.
Go with both of them.
Okay, that's good.
Item number seven, discuss, consider employee bonds, employee bonds, Bradley, Garnett, Deputy Tax Collector, five thousand dollars, Carlisle Smith, Deputy Tax Collector, five thousand dollars. To approve the bonds on Bradley, Dick Garnett, and Carlisle Smith, both in tax collection, tax system collection. On favor. Consider accepting receipts. Concept two rover tax valued at nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. I'll let our HR person explain that, Marcia, something.
Okay, everyone knows we have the health accounting program going through our insurance. Well, they have broke off and done a little class, it's called readiness for duty program. It'll be our deputies and the local DPS. So I sent Chris Moody and Julie.
Sure.
Sure. They, they went to early for their class, they, about a six-hour class, and they're gonna help with the program. The DPS will also accept the rover, so they'll have two. And then they'll go through workouts and routines that are planned for this readiness for duty. And it's just like a healthy county program for the law enforcement.
Rover, big, spicy.
Oh, sure, sir.
Open.
I understand.
Very well, I ask, I guess that would be your class, donation, and that, that, there you.
So, what?
Don't mind. Ron, is that a question?
I'm maybe like, why shouldn't?
Yeah, well, I had to help you, because why are we on the motion? On your press call, second. Do that, seven. Donation, tax, banking debt, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars for concept two rover, for rovers. On favor?
Judge, I forgot to mention, under public comment, we received a refund back from our unemployment fund. It's for several years, you know, they figure it, we sometimes have to pay, and we sometimes get a refund, but we got back twenty-three thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars in savings. Twenty-three, six ninety-seven nine.
Yeah, that's awesome, that you ended up.
Yep. So I guess we haven't had a whole lot of unemployment claims, which is good, except for the fact that I got a couple of them, they didn't count.
Thank you, that's good, good news. Item number nine, discuss, consider disposition of service dog canine donation to a charitable organization. The Young County United Society, resolution, Young County, number zero, A nine Y C five, FY twenty-two, according to two sixty-three one fifty-two Texas Department of Code, part of a resolution in here. I can hear. We've done a very similar thing a few years ago. Friends said he couldn't be here today. He had to get his documents, uh. Intent to be people. I think by terms of our laws, we have, of course, we're supposed to do, Texas Department of Code, put around to donate that to a charitable organization, find a, a favorable home organization or entity. I think those are our priority, is actually donate, get that panel into the hands, panel or the path left, Young County Board. And I think the dog's in with us, so.
We'll move.
Second. Press call.
No, sir.
Yes, baby. On the favor. You got the proof? Item number ten, discussion regarding, assess the cemetery celebration, then Chris usually downtown square, build it, it'll come every young county. Chris, they approved, and they.
Thanks y'all so much for having us back again today, I appreciate it. Look, it has been a while, but we've been working on some projects in the meantime, and always enjoy our collaboration with Young County. I want to apologize for the very vague request that I did, but that was intentionally written that way. We wanted this to be more of a brainstorming opportunity, and feedback, and some give and take. And really, no expectation on our part that we reached a decision today, but just wanted to open up the dialogue. And we've had several residents reach out to us and myself, and to Mr. Ingram in our office, about planning something for the cess was, I can't nail it. A hundred and fifty-year, a hundred and fifty-year celebration, I even practiced on the way, you know, across the street, I couldn't nail this word, I never can, I never. And, but the hundred and fifty-year celebration that we have coming up next year. And so we talked about doing something on the downtown square in our family seat, just to celebrate that, honor the, the history that we have here. And of course, one of the goals there would be to bring people to the downtown square. You know, our businesses here have faced significant challenges over the last year, and you see some of those empty storefronts. And we want to do whatever we can to get those thriving again, get those storefronts decorated. And the number one way we can do that, we can help to accomplish that, is to bring people to the downtown square. So, over the last few, really year or two, we've had some conversation just internally in our office, what would make sense, what's something we could do. Judge, you probably remember, a while, a few years ago, I had an idea to do a splash pad on the open lot right behind the, the old post office museum. And I think we had some really enthusiastic support for that, and we had some not enthusiastic support for that. And so, we really kind of said, okay, let's, let's rethink that, you know, that may not be the right thing, but let's keep going. Mr. Ingram said that he liked the idea of doing like a, excuse me, a permanent statue of some sort, with a dedication to honor the past hundred and fifty years. And I, I like that idea as well, not sure that it's as big of a draw, like an attraction, you know, to create people. And in the meantime, Mr. Anderson's been working on a, a project that I think probably is where we would find common ground and consensus on what makes the most sense, and that is to do a pavilion where the, currently the old jail, old crisis center sits. And so I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Anderson, let's see if he can come through some of that.
You had, well, like I say, I appreciate y'all that's been on the agenda today, Judge. I figured you would have a difficult time with that, pronouncing that word. I didn't think Chris would have any problem, and she's better at it, I'm very proud of her. Obviously, a, a great time coming up with the hundred and fiftieth year anniversary at Graham, but the history that Young County has, and everything that we got. And one idea that we have been talking internally, but haven't taken it to any group specifically, because we wanted to present it to y'all first, because this is obviously something that would be a change. Change is, is sometimes not always acceptable quickly, but also sometimes change isn't ever too. So, one thing, though, that we're talking about is the old jail that you guys have right over here, the nineteen twenty-one jail. Obviously, it, I know you guys have discussed it, and kind of what your hopes and future might be for that. I know if I ever had, had a hope of that building, I would just be, you know, a little nervous and, and, and kind of wondering what to do with it, and, and, and what could we do with it? Because it's gonna be costly either way. The one thing, though, that we're proposing is that we'd like to have access to that land, and seek permission to utilize that land, and then also, if, if that were to be given, we'd like to seek permission to deconstruct that old jail. I know that, that there's been some talk about the historical value of that. Right now, I've toured it, it's an old antiquated building, it's currently on code compliance, it'd be of substantial cost to, to be able to upgrade it from an ADA compliance standpoint to utilize the top two stories. I, I thought this was a real good idea before I toured it. And after I toured it, I'm not so sure, because I know it's not really an easy task to get that accomplished. I was able to take a tour with Tony Wyner, and Tony pointed out a lot of the history that's in there. And certainly, we would want to try to save that history, but I'm not sure we have to save an old hundred-year-old building to be able to save part of the history that's in it. So, the other part of that, yes, it's a historical site, but truly what historical event did happen in that particular jail is up for questioning, it's pretty neat to see the hanging grave, but at the same time, they said there's, none of them were actually hang, hanged in that jail, above a few of these trees, probably should have historical sites on them, so. That being said, the other item that you jump into, and I caution you, when you get working with the historical society, and we're working on that with the Elphomac, is there's a lot of extra hoops that you get to jump through with them, but there's not the money that used to be there. It's a different story, I think, if they're willing to step up and, and say, hey, we'll cost share with you, or we'll pay. I think they used to pay seventy percent of renovation, but my understanding is those funds aren't as readily available as they used to be, but their guidelines are still the same, so you're still gonna jump through the hoops and pay the cost to get them upgraded, but they don't come to you and say, hey, you know, here's somebody to offer it. So if we were to take that venture and be able to utilize the land, be able to tear down that old jail, this is kind of the idea that we have. Basically, this is a rendering of a pavilion.
Hey, stand boy. He's doing a great job.
Thank you, thank you. I was always supposed to cover my face.
The grants do, we don't trust them to talk a lot, so this is the job we found it with pavilion. Basically, a big community pavilion. The, the specs on it would be forty-foot wide by a hundred and ten foot long, the back of it, if you want to go ahead and whip the page. So it'd be forty-foot long by, forty-foot wide by a hundred and ten foot long. At the end of it, we'd have a thirty-by-thirty-five addition that would ultimately cover a ramp that would go down to Second Street, or the, the, in, in turn of Second Street, along the south side of the square. Basically, that, that building that we're looking at, we've had it quoted, it's pretty substantial cost, but what I'd like to do is really make that a quality building, put some, either, either rock facade up the post, or I found some faux rock facade, which I thought might be a little harder for people to tear up. But basically, the, the builders said recommend a gold rock, but, but we put a metal building up, we'd insulate the roof, and the roof, we'd like to put fans, obviously, events to go on on the square could benefit from having an insulated roof, a covered pavilion. Just a few of the events that we know would be able to utilize this, Lions Club Carnival, be a great spillover. What we envision, if you've seen my west side, the, the farm tables that are, that they rent out now, which are very substantial to rent out, we envision having those set out all the time in this pavilion with the ability for them to be taken up and stored right there close by, but, but, so. The Lions Club could use it for their carnival. Obviously, ever since we moved City Hall over to the Kiwanis Breakfast Spot, they've been looking and, and, and kind of endeavoring to find a better, better spot, what better place to put them than right here. The annual car show could utilize it, obviously, the boot truck championship with Texas would benefit from it. I think it'd be a picnic spot forever, and this weather's been beautiful the last couple of weeks. You know, run over to five, two, six pizza, grab yourself a go, and, and go over there and sit down during your lunch hour. Also, a great site for not only our students, but county students, all of them wants, if they wanted to come over, I know we have a few schools that come over and go to Fireman's Park, a few schools that come over and bring their kids to go to the movie theater, a better way off, a picnic spot on the square as well, and you can walk over, it's all, you can walk the distance with good parking for that, with those buses as well. There's plenty of electricity right there close, so we could basically hardwire the front side of that, where anybody that wants to bring in live music, or, or have any kind of availability for electricity, we, we would have it right there on the square. It would be a great asset for the Chamber and for the Elphomac, two, two good entities on both sides of it that sometime need out more rental space. I really see this being a great benefit to the Elphomac, and in terms of, of events that happen during this time of year that might want to be utilized. And who, who knows what this could bring to our square, but, but another opportunity to bring people to the square, and I think that the one thing I've been challenged with since I moved here, six years ago, I was frustrated because the, the business on the square don't, don't stay open on the weekends. Why don't they stay open on the weekends? They don't stay open on the weekends because there's no people on the square on the weekends. So, this would be an inviting place for people to get out and about. One thing, I think, in, in this old arch that we decorated for Christmas, I'm amazed the amount of families, they come down here and take family pictures, and you see them all over basement with that arch and that, that Christmas decoration there. So, the other neat thing I'd like to add to this, if it does come to fruition, is along the top of that, because it'll be in between trees, right over here on the other side of the square, it's on one side, you have Young CO, and on the other side, Graham TX, so that when people fly over, they know exactly where they're at, in Young County, Texas. Also, on the front, I'd like to see it, and we've kind of got a brand new campaign, we have a big G, but on the front, as you walk into that facility, you have a big G with a little TX, and then maybe a, a big Y with a CO to the other side. A great community project that I think could, could garner a lot of support from our communities. We have reached out to all the Chamber of Commerce, they think it's a good idea, and I think they'd like to, to endeavor with us and help raise funds. The other important thing that we want to tell everyone, wish I had the fund value of it before. But, the city, obviously, we struggle with, with finances from time to time, but our goal here is there'll be no city tax dollars spent on this. This is, this is the project that, that, that comes to fruition, it'll all be through private donations. We want to give, give the community to give back to Graham, and then build something nice on the square for others to use for, for the future. So that's kind of our, our pitch today, I guess. We've had a lot of ideas on the square, but we think this one would be one that would be very beneficial to all, all involved. You had something to add on the historical side, too?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, because I've been part of a few projects where we have either updated or replaced, I mean, such as the mural where the bulls are now, and there was quite a bit of feedback on that when we started that process. Now, if you ask the, you know, the junior high, high school kids, that's one of their favorite spots, to go take their Instagram photos, or whatever, they use Snapchat or whatever. So, you know, that's kind of how it works with history, and I, I don't ever want to take away or destroy any type of history, we want it preserved, but I think we can preserve history without leaving a decaying building. And I don't say that lightly, I know that, that's really important to a lot of people, and I don't want to dismiss that at all. I just think, looking into the future, where are we gonna be in ten, twenty, fifty years from now? What's that building ever going to be used for? Is there a use for it, that, you know, that I can't see right now, maybe there is, but I don't see how, or how that would be feasible. So, I'd like to, to use that spot on our downtown square. So, I'd like to use that spot on our downtown square to make it something attractive for the residents, for the visitors, and for the entire county. That's why we wanted the Allie Chamber, we want to make sure this is something that benefits all of the cities in county, not just for.
So, like, all of the stuff inside the old jail, if we did lose this, all the stuff inside the old jail, will it be presented to like Tony and Shannon to go through it? Or anything happened in every kind of history or whatever needs to be out of that building?
Well, it's been the crisis center now for a while, so I don't know how much, as far as art factoring.
What I'm saying, if there is anything in there?
Yeah, I think there is. Obviously, that's gonna be one of those things, I've got a quote to tear it down. But obviously, when you go, there's a difference between tearing a building down and trying to save parts of the stuff. That's it, and that's why I'd go deconstruct instead of demo. So, I would, I would say, if that's something that we wanted to work together on, that we could work with whatever group and try to collect as much of that history and then we're really just gonna get out of there. And I think, I don't know if Tony and Shannon are coming to visit with y'all, but I like their idea of kind of how they're gonna start. We've offered them, Stand By Mountain, to kind of work up maybe a walking trail through there with history monuments throughout, maybe some placards to talk about. But, you know, and they've got some great ideas with Echo Street. Bringing some events to Echo Street eventually. So, that can grow into a great history for Young County. Also, as we continue to do the murals, I'm really excited about the mural the newspaper highlighted today or this weekend in their event with promoting Fort Belknap. You know, that's been a...
Vegas does a good job.
I think, but I think, when you get Vegas to do his job, then he does a great job. Artists are a little not as attentive to time as some of them, but we have really enjoyed. Obviously, that's a CDB venture, but we have really enjoyed the opportunity to work with the county. And I think you guys have done great things out there at Fort Belknap. And I really think this just adds to it, a community, and again, kind of takes the head off your hands as well, so.
Yeah, exactly, because that building is, I mean, the crisis center couldn't survive in a, in a much of that stuff.
You know, the cool thing about it is, is when you take something that's not usable for sense for everybody and take it and make something that anybody can come and use, it's a lot more desirable and I think it gives back to the community a whole lot more. I mean, you can look back in the past at what that building stood for, just served its purpose. And now they can take this right here and then move on to the next project, the next future, people that's gonna be here. You know, that's the thing we deal with in little communities, in community centers. We don't get, like we used to get together in little communities, but we'll come to a big town to a big event, because that's just how it works.
And I'm jealous of the Lionsville because they have an ice covered pavilion that we do in Graham. But that's why.
So does Murray.
Every time I go out there, I think about that.
Murray does.
But I think it will be really fun to look at new events that end up utilized.
I think it's gonna be good to take to all the clubs and the funds and all that. Just let them know that we're not doing anything malicious to their town, we're trying to make it better.
Well, that's our hope. I'll talk to the city council later on it. And then we would love to start promoting it to some community events.
Because I got Lions Club, we're up in two weeks.
Who'd you say that some of the services in that community? Lions Club, they're one of the nice things, they have a meeting out there and they handle the inside.
Yeah, and all of that, that'd be great.
You know?
But we're also gonna, we talked about maybe the city club meeting there once in a while.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I mean, pardon?
I also, I talked to the Thorpe of Holup about this. I talked to him about some plans, so a lot of different ideas. But his suggestion, and you know, I don't know that any of us really fully appreciate history, especially Mr. Holup does, but his suggestion was to put some types of, you know, plaque or, what do they call the little, you know, like the standing ones?
Memorial, I know what you're saying.
You know, that you can, that explains the issue, that has some of the pictures that... So that way, we're not losing anything, you know, the physical structure maybe, but we're not losing the history, that we're always trying to, it's history, you can't get rid of it. So, and then basically honoring that space, you know, and what has happened there, which I really liked that idea as well.
I actually thought of this idea when I was walking around doing what good civic matter we can do and think about the liability that we're on, the risk that we have with the sidewalk that's got a crack in it. And there are a couple of sections of that sidewalk that concern me. I'm not gonna tell the community so that they won't go find them. But at the same time, I was sitting there thinking about, well, we need to redo this sidewalk, regardless of where or what. I mean, those are things we want to keep nice, but I just kept thinking, well, what about this sidewalk actually led to somewhere? Instead, you know, it leads to the jail that we're not utilizing.
We're gonna have to get one seat too, because it's kind of up all the way?
I don't know, I haven't even thought about, you know, go cover on the front side, cover on the back side and utilize the jail. But I think that's really difficult to do and leave that structure there and you're still dealing with the original structure. So, appreciate your time today. We're gonna go, like I said, we are gonna talk to the city council about this. And we think it's got merit regardless of where it goes, but I think it makes sense to put it right there in the middle of Young County, middle of Graham and middle of the county.
Square? Besides being a tripod, you tell me anything?
No. I, I do, I do see the value of having something in the center of our square that will drive foot traffic and give it another place for us to have events. And a hang covered area is pretty hard to find in Graham and even in Young County. So, as far as what we see with the tourism and the attraction of our downtown square, it's only gonna be an asset for us to be able to utilize that space. I love this idea, I'll be the president of the Rotary Club next year and would love to see a meeting there, maybe even if it was once a month or once a quarter. Think that the amount of utilization is really unlimited for something like this.
I'll be president of the Lions next year.
There we go.
I think you can take and put a projection straight in one end of that deal and have a moving eye.
You sure did.
That's true.
I mean, there's so many things you could do about that.
There's many things that you can come up with, ice cream suckers.
Well, I like, I like to see you put booths in there, you know, and have like, I mean, air stuff, yeah.
But I just tell you too, the reason we're bringing this to you today, guys, I think we're kind of a society where we don't communicate well enough with anybody. And I said this to our airport board the other day, they had a few issues come up and I'm like, we don't discuss them. We sure can't tell where we stand on them. So, I hope you don't feel like we're here today pressuring and shoving this on you, but at the same time, at some point, the conversation begins to start.
And I like the idea that the city and the county weren't together.
Yes.
Well, we're like the farmers market, you know, they're still there, it's like for that.
Yes, I mean, great.
You know, us working together would be, it's called a good thing for our community.
Let me add this, we have a whipper here, Mayor Graham, Texas. I think the Black team, they want to have a little input in here too.
I would, it's a great opportunity for the city and commissioners course and everybody to get together and to work together for a common cause that benefits everybody. And that's why I think it's such a great idea, and I think the council will too. And as we, as we bring this out in the community, I think the support will begin to grow. And I just hope that the commissioners look at this and hope that we can act upon this and move forward and make this a great opportunity because everybody benefits from it. Some other things that are going on within the community, I think, will also help us and feed into this as time goes on. And so, I would encourage this dialogue to continue and thank y'all for listening to us and hearing us out of this.
And we've got some interesting faces along Graham. I know y'all are probably looking at yourselves, texting numbers and just excited about what's going on and where they're headed. I mean, it's very, very encouraging. If we get one more meeting, we've talked about people that have been back to Graham and how do we get them back to the square? Because ultimately, we do want to grow this square to the point where those stores will want to be open all week. And I think if we can add another similar Mary's establishment to the square, which I know two or three have talked about, but you know, there's no greater endeavor than a small business. So, I understand why a few of them have not jumped in with both feet. But the GIA continues to work on a concept project on the north side of the square. And now they're kind of looking at reinforcing that building to have some seating underneath the cover of the building and then also allowing some food trucks to move in there from time to time and serve meals on the square too. So, yeah, you can do to get people to the square, the vibrant city of your community is the square. And, you know, I know I've talked to a lot of people that talk about what Graham Square used to be, but it's still the same square. We're just gonna figure out a way to get it revitalized and I think it takes a push from both sides. Like I said, a conversation a long time ago when they told me why they don't stay open on the weekend makes a valid sense and if there's not a reason to, so we're trying to do more.
Phil, we're troubled scheduling it up. I may have few missed to play that out there. Are we gonna go through the check door, then are we gonna go through Graham, what they?
Point to be discussed. So, I would say, you know, obviously, if they've got a staff person that schedules a meeting room that's being utilized in the chamber, if we're close with the Elkhland Act as well, I just think, you know, we've got that calendar that we keep already and we can just add that to it. So, because we want to be open to the public, but it'd be like any other pavilion we've got in town. They're open to the public unless someone reserves it. And then we could sign up the stickers or post it on social media.
But that, we want to use it on the weekends or then you're gonna have to have a schedule.
Just like, yeah, just like Fort Belknap. And I think that's a great idea of what they're doing too about thank you to the, whatever family we'll see next year. They have a bunch of reunions going on out there, so. Another opportunity.
Sure.
Any other questions?
Whoever hates us, it makes us ugly all the time.
Appreciate it. I don't feel for any of the other questions or concerns.
Do you have any more ideas of stuff for the pavilion?
I'd like for this to be a huge part of it, really. I'd like to be dedicated to the Sesquicentennial.
Do you remember the 100-year, the centennial?
Yes, the plates.
Remember what all the pavilion did back then?
No.
The mustaches or beards, all, everybody grew one.
Really?
Yeah, that were the big thing back then.
I want to see the judge with the big old curly beard.
You have a head, you might have head start, so.
Oh, it's.
But that's what, that's what he did in 100 years.
That's funny. I know, I've seen, I have one of the plates in my office. You don't think I would?
I know, they're, they rest on the old style of the van, you know, and all that, but.
That's fun. Well, well, that's.
Good, I'll be willing to hand our next presentation to you for that type of work.
Remember, I got a Lions Club in two weeks that I got a presentation, if y'all want to do a presentation.
For the family.
Okay, for real? I'll get hold of you, Graham.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Thank you all.
I know it's biggest player, fist to help out a little bit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You did? Sesquicentennial?
Sesquicentennial.
Sesquicentennial.
What?
Sesquicentennial.
Sesquicentennial.
I remember the centennial.
This, I, I, it's remember Sesquicentennial.
That's what I was saying, Sesquicentennial. Come on, Kate.
150 years.
I like it, yeah.
I'm just letting me around, see the 150 years.
Yeah.
I ain't here yet.
Yeah, we never know. Yeah, what's going to happen tomorrow, what the good Lord gives to us. Never know.
Okay, we'll read this at this birthday. Out of number eleven, let's discuss and take no action on that previous other than to postpone it to near future generations. Out of number eleven, let's discuss and consider a local agreement between Young County and the Graham Hospital District for milling the parking area. This is a resolution that, our resolution that's a local agreement that, I believe. They have people put on their heads.
Yes. I had somebody approach me about that, to help them out on that. They used to have three buildings back there. Two of them, the first two were on concrete slabs, the back one was on pier and beam. They had trouble with water leaks and stuff in the past with one on pier and beam and next to all the flooring and stuff up, so they chose to disassemble it, move it off and tear it down. Now you can make all the rest of the parking lot. So, in the midst of recovering where the old building was, they decided to do with all the parking lot. And all of those do go in the middle of about two inches of it.
Does it still have their extension center in there? We did, but.
I think so, but there's a lot. This is right here, we're gonna pull it to the right, the three pillars. That education center is back here to the left.
Well, it's kind of right behind the east hospital.
Yeah, this is on the west side.
Yeah, this is on the west side of hospital.
You know, the college office and the family, many boys.
Oh, yeah.
It's a third building behind there that they tore down.
Yeah, a couple of deets in them, they look like a deet.
So, why the SU?
Oh, there's a, there was a, another person that knew what we did up here at the food pantry.
I got you.
And said, you know how work travels?
I got you.
So, here we go.
The difference is we can charge these a little differently than we did the food pantry too.
Two documents here, one on district general interlocal between Young County and Graham Hospital District. And I think you just file the last one here and then the second one is a companion document for a specific project.
Yes.
I think that parking lot, if there's someone else that's going to work and lay all that back down.
Yes, all we're doing is just put another, and then there's a way to come in.
And it does have a specific contract price, same price I'm like, two years, so. Young County is very, very disciplined with a benefit exchange, if you will, of that. I think it's well in line, these off, like, property house and the vast majority are bought. Any motion?
So, what?
Seven weeks.
Great. Give me taking mine, give Mr. Sherrill, signing it.
I'll get up.
Yeah.
There's spots in there where we need to have, but we don't care. So, make two, give it, also for.
That's it.
I've been to a lovely. Graham Hospital District. For the purpose of the other, I've talked to a lot of them.
I don't know, yeah.
Three thousand?
Oh, three thousand. Yeah. You might. Hold this. Place you put it out here, third paragraph here. Thank you, I'm gonna take one. Mr. County, just go forward.
Oh, it does, yeah.
Yeah.
Now, was that a question?
Yeah. Maybe you should write that in there, it's probably.
Your name. I don't think you have that. You have that state, your name, your name. We missed it. Our paragraph on our site.
Yes, first page. Should have.
Bring them to, I think it's in Young County.
We did this kind of in a hurry.
Yeah.
Just gonna move that, that bridge and we'll sign it. Go, please.
I love that line. Just to say.
We, we, we can vote on it.
I don't think so.
Oh, thank you.
No. And pencil.
Okay, you have one brown.
Okay, yes, one brown.
Okay, we're gonna be, uh, interlocal agreement with the Grand Hospital District. From one year, as the, uh, picture project, probably. Waiting, uh, two, extra three thousand dollars, all in favor?
That can't be my break real quick, Judge.
Yeah.
It's empty. This is for.
Break to here, though, which is not.
It's not here yet.
Are you breaking?
Okay, we're on break, cut off, what will you? Take a little break here for about five, ten minutes.
Is there?
There.
You just gotta, you just gotta double check everything. Forget all the different places.
You know, all we can do, all you can do is fix and go forward. Let me see where she's at and.
And, you know, it's been hectic. You guys have been gone, she's been here, they do everything.
I know.
Is there any other things on it? Is there any other things on it?
Uh, that's all. That's all.
You want it or you don't?
I don't.
Okay, so what are you planning on doing on this close session? Everybody going there?
Well, I'll touch on, I have, um, well, everybody would leave. Probably on the, on the beer.
It, it acted up this morning.
What?
It acted up this morning.
Well, I could look on the, with this one too.
There, that TV is what I'm talking about. It just stayed there. I was like, this never does this. Probably ten, fifteen minutes before anything came out, just on that. Okay. Lots. It's captain. It's something that it can hang up.
What night's slow, really? Or slow?
Part of you, I come sitting there for a while and then I walked over there, part of the law, I'm watching it sit there, and when I made that, it just backed up. I said, I'm gonna sit. We both did.
Oh, you just started.
But.
So.
Oh, I said it, sir. He said, it's great. It's what we always do. It kind of just blends right in out there. All right, so I'm saying that's worth it. I see it. You're playing with the correct little kid. So, we're all kind of present with little kids. Got a whole bunch of things. Well, I'm seeing mine, you don't have one on the outside. Right there in your pocket, top of your pocket. Your white shirt, it's. Get out of your pocket. I just looked it out. Broke your shirt. It was just odd level and I don't put it to you. Where, what's that, yeah, right there. Not a lot. Start one, throw it in.
Thank you.
We didn't start working on four columns. And I said, I will see you two hundred thirty seven. You want County Attorney's Office, please press the number three seven after the word. I think it's a great major tax, but that's all I did. Eighty percent of the dollars were working, called me, and I just tried hard, she was there, she was there. I watched John. Of course, you got it now.
Now, now that last.
Next year. It's so true. I said, I'm watching, I'm like, yikes.
How long that last?
He was that hard. Maybe it's Toby.
Whatever folks about. People care, watch your hand back.
I think that.
Those are the sound waves.
Yeah. Have you? That's why she's there.
I would say. Well, I thought. That's your.
No.
I would.
I wouldn't even mind making one, Steve's getting it.
Is there gonna be anybody here doing this close session today?
A hundred and fifty, though.
We're here, well, all of us. Like, I'm also thinking about very close, we'll go with the very close. Did you, look here, one, let him, so I got the hand, well. That was all of us, replace y'all four, we're on the case.
Yeah.
During the. We're about to, uh, from unsafe. Right, we're in there.
Well, that meeting two weeks ago was interesting, just listening to how they're all in discussion on the lines and stuff. But ain't done by nowhere the fifteen words, fifteen election back. Do that, right?
Well.
That's, that's.
Well, like I lost it on the, yeah.
Did Timmy rewrite that?
Was that? For, you know, the question.
No canon, yeah.
Did Timmy rewrite that first page?
What's that?
Did Timmy rewrite that first page?
It was weird, they had.
Yeah, I don't wanna say.
I. Where I like.
Where it's going here?
Yeah.
Oh.
I would.
You thought you had good.
I surprised.
Up there in the star cafe.
You gotta be.
Oh, it's just been for two Friday.
They had a chicken bun that I just barely touched.
Especially from Travis County.
Oh, we ate breakfast, Tommy and I did, we stayed at H three count, you know, the. Top Court Hotel.
Had Allison.
I showed you pictures.
Or still.
She was, she was like, great, we had brown, bacon. I didn't, I would think we ate some cheese and stuff that I didn't eat, but I mean, those were all day. I didn't come.
See anybody new?
Here, bite there.
Was, uh.
I want to lay down here.
Oh, yeah. Matt feels better.
It's all the hands.
Can you lay straight that way?
I can lay straight now. Now.
Okay, we're, uh, back in session, that is, uh, ten forty. Four. I. October twenty fifth, two thousand. We reached out on number twelve. This will be received later than ten, the invoice paid regarding double course chips sealed for Copeham Lane, James Hill, at a donated value of one hundred three thousand six hundred dollars. The invoice was more than that, obviously, probably done some work, which probably did, you know, you wanna pay out.
But, uh, we, we decided that it was okay for him to do it. We just asked for the letter ten, yeah, so it's there, it's done. Can you widen the road a little bit?
It may, it may have been, it may have been there.
Definitely.
Blacked out, so that's, that's why I don't like it.
Pretty big donation, isn't it?
Even though I'm more successful, I can't judge.
Way more successful.
So, we saw the donation, donation is important to, uh, our local government code that called, they've got the number right now. The Michigan's court must present all the payments that are, sometimes we have multiple donations. Do them at one time, at one session, but this is a brick inside donation. Probably next to the acting on.
Yes.
And, uh, we'll. Probably another.
Another thing, you say.
Although it. At some point, um. At some point, we're gonna start patching hot hoes and just cost. Initial buy. I never heard of that, he's the asshole. Is there any discussion here, or just make motion?
Just a motion to accept the donation.
I'll make it.
He, uh, he's gonna drive because he wanted to.
All in favor of accepting the donation from James Hill for a two course sale on a portion of Cope, Copeham Lane. And with a value of a hundred and three thousand six hundred dollars on paper. Any opposed?
If, uh, if you can, you can raise up whatever.
Now, if you start subbing these, now there are any part of those springs.
No, I don't.
You, of course.
Okay.
I meant, doesn't the wife, does it say? Is that on?
It's on. Straight ahead. I mean, you go, you go straight.
Try to. Out of number thirteen, as discussed, consider Young County appraisal district order correction nominations, this got set in there as resolution number zero eight nine of, uh, twenty twenty two. Um, according to eligible, like, one nomination that's achieved, like one, and they can also make one for every position of all five offices. Uh, I don't know if anybody's talked to anybody, but I lived all night this morning, and they say, God, if they could do that again, it may, of course, will. I'll be with it. I don't have a part or any other nomination that someone, I'm here to do.
Two.
Just two.
Yeah. What you want in Stacy?
If you want.
Mrs. Far Corrector for Young Central appraisal district.
You want that judge?
Yeah.
Oh.
I'm like a motion we use all of our voting. You mind?
Yeah, I'll say that.
Okay. One. Take a break, in a second. Two. Nominate. Right, so. No other nomination. Now, what, what type of areas, uh, we allow that? They had part of that motion for our vote, it's not against the site, what this motion is to add, that sounds to the list on these. There's actually two thousand, five thousand two votes, it looks like, as it's calculated on this. So, we have votes. There's N T C, N C T C and Price and I S D, Woodson I S D. You could also have a few votes there. That total, that's five thousand two, I think it's like if we had five thousand votes. That adds up to five thousand two. We're eligible to vote to make a nomination for each position, so we can nominate five different persons to be placed on the ballot. We will add all of the ballots to, add all of the names to a ballot. And then I think that the votes will be in December. Probably twenty fifteen, or at December the fifteenth, ninety twenty one. And the top five vote getters will be nominated to obviously. Great, I S D has, I've got enough for one, I can, I can place one. On nomination, I think whatever, each entity can do whatever they want with their votes out of the license. Get types of thousand. Thousand and one quarter, who's last, elect anybody or guarantee their election. But the top of the five vote getters will be members. To place that on the ballot, we'll be on the bottom of that ballot sometime, I think, for, is everything, I think that's what election is. You understand that motion with the fourteen, twenty four votes. Got a motion with Commissioner Wiley and Second Amendment, put up to nominate Mike Sappes, whether nominations from Young County. And. For all Young County votes, four three hundred and twenty four, I believe that's calculated. Do that nomination. All in favor. When it's in the ballot now, I'll mark all four three hundred and twenty four votes for each sign. Okay. That would come for about a hundred thirty, thirty six, so.
It'll come sooner than later.
Okay, item number fourteen, discussed, considered requesting seal bids for a two thousand and eighteen one forty M three motor grader, I think that's the long last that the switch gears here. So, pressing forward.
We're going to take bids starting today till, resume until four P M Friday, November the sixth.
November the sixth.
November the sixth. We'll open it, record it ten eighty on Monday, November the eighth.
Can I? Okay, forget this, today.
Well, yeah, I'm getting.
First thing she did, but. I don't.
November eighth.
Okay, we've got.
Ten.
Ten.
We've got second. I'm saying that person. Most of Commissioner Wiley and Second Amendment, respectful to advertise for seal bids. For a two thousand and eighteen one forty M three motor grader. Begin today and end on November the sixth, four P M.
Is it six o'clock?
That's what I thought, I think that's.
The fifth, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's the fifth.
I was looking, I might have the sixth.
Ending November the fifth, we'll be on the open.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah.
November, the open, November the eighth, it's gonna be on. All in favor?
The capo.
Okay. Item number fifteen, as discussed, considered sale of twenty foot utility trailer, trailer with bunker option, November twentieth, this is also from Wiley.
Yes, uh, you're gonna run it in the paper for a week.
Yes, I just have to do it one time, and if there's any other equipment, I just kind of need to know what it is.
Is.
Fuckin' bull.
Get away.
Go ahead, bunker up.
I like motion, we consider that.
Thank you.
Is, is there any other equipment anybody has that they want to put in there? Well, this lists this one piece of equipment and not all.
What is the sale?
November twenty.
Uh, right there.
Okay, all right, so just one twenty foot trailer.
Okay.
Motion of Commissioner Wiley and Second Amendment, to advertise one twenty foot utility trailer. So, the bunker option, November twentieth, two thousand twenty.
Are you putting a reserve bid on that one?
Good for that.
How's the floor?
Everything. Why don't you turn?
I'm checking that for me.
He's even got jacks in the end.
Is it?
Got six old wheels or, yeah, got sixteen inch tire.
With brand? Mine's black.
It's my brand, yeah.
And what kind?
I don't know what brand it is.
Try out this thing on this now. Do you have five of one or is it?
I don't know, five, four, five.
What white writing is on it? Here, bestie.
I'm very excuse you, only for you.
Really? What's it like?
Only seventeen.
Yeah, I'd say seventeen, eighteen, yeah.
I don't like that gold, mine's tired, six eight foot. Right, that's well.
He bullet pad.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Item number fifteen, discussed, considered courthouse backup generator. I don't have any further, I don't have any further. I've got, I've got that.
Now, is this something we're just gonna pay out budget, something where, is it going to qualify with that?
Even qualify with the part about your broadband. We're qualified, and also it qualifies because of our ninety one one versus response to downstairs, and it qualifies too.
Well, I think what we probably should do, and I I remember, we can, uh, have a discussion on uses of the, uh, American relief fund. I've got information in there, it's about that too, on all that.
You gonna give us a book report?
I'm in proof, so I'll be, excuse me.
I see you're gonna give a book report on that information, because it's a lot.
Broadband is very consideration. Might be, might have reach on broadband, but I don't know if there's other ideals looking around with that regard, broadband. We need to discuss and consider. We just have a meeting of our county property. I'm here, by the way, we just had our hundred year celebration. Those centuries, and they side, they side church Christ, a hundred, a hundred years old this year. Like the Met House, uh, yeah. Finally got some kind of building in Portent Down Sea, and then eventually built that building that's there. This building, it went down, it came home somewhere around about nineteen sixty.
If we discuss that, we need to put on there, it'd be even just about considering doing bonus that for the coverage, like dealing all that too.
That's what I say, and that's what I'm like comment.
And I need to do some checking on that.
There'll be at least five different ideals, or I have to keep that.
From what I hear from the Otters, the ones that were gonna do that budgeted for that, to put in their budget to pay that and move to, I don't know how we can do it without it.
Well.
I want to be so careful with this.
I know we've got two requests already. And out of, since August. One, we're a hospital, this, one, only hospital district. For, uh, staffing that they have to do. Overtime, things like that, that have to be put in. One of the requests. Seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars, the big round hospital district, we have requested four hundred thousand. Part of those, part of those funds are used for ambulance replacement.
Did they, you know, how much money they got? How much money did the hospitals get?
Well, I don't think they got anything, I'm like their, their funding is ongoing, I don't know if they have specific amount. In that, huh? Well. I saw discussions that they have, those are two requests. I've been hanging on to, because we haven't made any kind of decision where to use those funds. I know they get funding, you know, they've got related funds all along, along the way, and they, they have stacking. Persons that think they're right, um, either found that, uh, nor from state federal source.
What is it, he lost it? Everybody we talked to down there said, you know, they said they're gonna give us X amount of. He said, don't expect to get the second. He said, we, you're not the first, but don't, don't, bank don't get the second at all.
Not, not heaven, but.
Not at all.
If we come up with some ideas.
I'm no bad. Or, like first that is, don't give it, maybe you're, you know, they just, or they're gonna have to allow.
Yeah, but check with the treasury and make sure it follows all the qualifications and.
We call that guy with Laco, he can call the treasury office when you say.
But I don't stop the nomination, I don't, US Treasury don't stop the nomination.
And the treasury keeps changing it, but.
Yes.
So, I just want to be very careful with that.
That's why I think it better if we call it, have it in this request sheet from them personally, than when we have it running, yes, your CD is.
Yeah.
I think we need, you know, as far as this generator. Like it's, like it's the least decent equipment here at the courthouse. Been thinking about that, just gone through talking about some of the county property, been a hundred years old at this courthouse, ninety, nearly, ninety years old. It will be next year, so. Kind of makes me post half way.
I guess, I guess my point in, in this deal, which back in February, he is, is, is with anything. If you get it ordered, and figure that out in the paper, we're looking at several months before it shuts up.
How much money are we looking at?
About one deal, about sixty thousand.
The other was what?
Two hundred.
I still think we need to figure out what we're gonna do with funds. Over the day. First thing, or maybe, maybe the horse, yeah, that's good out, I think I like that one too, I like, I like that. Generator, it possibly could be worth a piece of, sometime soon. I don't know if there's many tests on the gas line, natural gas, furnace those that may or may not, and would may or may not want to.
Would it be that much that we'd get sealed in?
Complete.
Something fifty thousand?
Yeah, you'd have to be seventy. I guess you'd say we've got two bits.
Well, they'll have to reset that as a seal.
Reset bill.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
That water always six months out, I don't bet I believe in get one.
Six, eight. It's definitely a year. Depends on. He said he can provide the farm, or he probably can get one.
Nobody will get parts or anything anymore.
I know it.
It's one of these.
Okay, we'll begin discussing of the use of the vote of funds for personal agenda. I'll probably sit down, get the end, leave, if, if there's any possible way, I don't know if there's any possible way, but if there is any possible way to get that closed, saying, I'll do that first. I don't think there's any possible way doing that. Or any provision in code that you could ask to do that. What was that beer? I'm going to.
I don't draw any white no money.
It doesn't matter anyway, because I have a three of it anyway.
Give Rocky for the other.
Yeah, the beer, what's that say? I'll bet you did. Cool, use the vote of the, uh, imagine that some of your hand, they have. Okay, cool, we're gonna discuss again. Okay.
Time to get, I quit looking.
Item number seventeen, discussed, considered historical commission of use for the Florida nineteen ninety one jail, suspected that would, my last presentation, probably don't need y'all to do that.
Yeah. You, I agree.
I don't have a problem. Problem with it, but, how about you guys?
He's in the home of the state. Let's go to this.
Well, what's the problem we have today? Well, with the proposal we had today, and with it going to other places as it is right now, uh, to be talked about, I don't see why we want to tie the bill up to this one.
Okay, so if I like that motion, it would fail three through or two through? Okay, I'll make it. A motion that we allow to use the first floor nineteen forty-one to the Young County Historical Commission, is your say?
I'll say.
Okay.
Sounds like it's a question over there, you said. I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, all favor? Uh, all opposed? Is that you put it?
Yes.
Yeah. I don't see putting something in there that, when we're sitting here talking about doing other things at this point, too.
That's all fair. Barred restrictions.
Right, maybe this week.
It's more than that.
So, last week, you kind of crammed up things a little bit.
Yeah, I, I don't know. Sorry, I, I'm a lot of, of vital kinds of likes. Sure will, pressure.
Yeah, man.
You didn't wait last year, did you?
Yeah. I don't know, got, got some privacy.
Thank you.
Our day, my way.
Let's get it.
You got it, you got it this year? You got it this year?
Yeah, well, I never did take the guy off, but, you know.
I could get a third, but I won't.
Figure out, and I, repertory, I, then, it's set right, we're gonna, um, it grew a little bit, pretty good, it looks quite, pretty good hay. Having weed, fresh, perfect. I sprayed it. I was about out, so. Got some sale now, and that's about it.
Hay?
Three thirty dollar hay. They're leased. Okay.
What section?
No, we didn't, no accident. Barred restrictions. Okay, we're. Let's let the kid go. What we're gonna do, if he's, if he can zoom it, if he can move it, come on there, all four of you, or maybe all five of us, we'll go in there, jury room, for everybody to see one of them, and we're gonna have his feedback.
Yeah. What? This space business.
Oh, you did it.
You just like to hear yourself, why you tall?
Oh, yeah. I went to the, uh, dozens in the shower last night and heard. Yeah.
Hey, Bob, this is Tom Boltz. We're calling in this, folks, actually, they're vital. I can't see if I can. Excuse me? Okay. I'll do that, uh, I guess, I'll ask them.
Well, too many, that's, uh, I mean. That's why. Over and through the work, that, that's correct.
Better go on what I did. Yeah.
I don't know, Mark, here is the drill, if you're, if you're, it's a five.
Over, can you hear that?
Yes.
Alright. Where do we want to start?
The offer.
Well, the offer that they made is that they're asking for eighty-five percent, we all, let it here this spring, we all, uh, hang out. Yeah, that's your ten, huh? Well, I haven't talked, I haven't gotten to do it. Okay, let me, uh, see if I can figure out how to, screen here. Guys, if you're gonna have to enable me doing that.
Okay.
Yeah. Oh, it's disabled, dissipating screen sharing, I get the message, and you've disabled that.
I have disabled that, no, well, I, I've got, I've got this select a window or an application that you want to share.
Um, well, I'm trying to share a spreadsheet with you, hey, and you're gonna have to allow me to do that.
Okay. Have I done that?
Uh, I mean, so you're creating emails? This is, is sharing your screen, I need to share my screen.
You might be going.
And that.
You are sharing, you are sharing, sharing. Okay. We're not gonna go do the single screen sharing, let me see what this is.
Should give you an ability to share.
Multiple participants can share.
Yeah. Alright, there you go. Can y'all see, get a screen now?
Yes.
Screen, a spreadsheet?
Yeah.
Alright, uh, their application is a little confusing, in the application, they talk about two hundred eighty-one billion, but in their attached spreadsheet, they go down to two hundred forty-five billion.
Yes.
Uh, I'm not sure, they're, where they get it, I mean, you know, I need to get a hold of, but if I took the application at face value with two hundred eighty-one million, three seventy-five. They're wanting to do a tie-in, uh, so this is an appreciation factors that they plug into their spreadsheet. I generally use about eight percent a year declining value, it's apparent that they, because they're having in their system to a M project, uh. They're here, they're saying with the eighty percent accelerated depreciation rate, that is why it's lower. I'm not sure, we're, we're, we're leading to do that.
Hey, Bob, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I left with them a couple weeks ago, and every question, you know, with them, so, they're, they're tied with the platform, and I said, what if we don't beat it, I asked, like, what's your company, to walk in, or?
Well, that's a decent question, uh, you know, if, if they think they're gonna come any way, I don't have any one brand that they, uh, particularly, the eighty-five percent they're asking for. Under their application, this is the tax rate that they're using, I think this is the tax rate for the APEX project, uh, point five seven four three.
Yeah, I don't really recall, I'd have to look back and see what they want.
Yeah, I went back to the APEX and that's what you, I think it's five seven four three three, but anyway, that's. That ground, I mean, it is a, uh, yeah, that goes to four thirty. Uh, anyway, try not to get too far down into the weeds, add the eighty-five percent over the ten year period, I know, if they still their application, they do eighty-one, I think, uh, that there is, and they, they want, uh, in their application, forty-five, they want, so that's, yeah.